And they gotta fix that for next time, Danny. Yeah, but then we should stay virtual till they fix it. Alright guys, we're going live.
Yep, Mr. Smith, we are live now.
Waiting for Mr. Mount. That's all.
Uh, Mr. Smith, we are live now.
We have five, we could go right into exact while people filter in. If you'd like. One. Yeah, we've, we have just five.
Sorry if you can't hear me, I'm six. Just confirming, we are live on the stream.
Okay. My internet connection is unstable, it says. Wonderful. Okay, I'd like to call uh, the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting of March the 18th, 2021 to order. If you would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a brief moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hussey, roll call please.
Mr. Awad. Ms. Basford. Ms. Beltran. Mr. Canova.
Gotcha. Mr. Awad, you got?
Mr. Daley.
Yeah, I sit here.
Ms. Danny.
Here.
Mr. Casper.
Here.
Mr. Abidrabo.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Uh, mission statement, Mr. Casper, would you like to read it, please?
The mission of the Clifton School District in an open and reciprocal community partnership is to provide all students with a quality education to develop the skills necessary to become literate lifelong learners who are responsible and productive citizens, contributing to a democratic society in an ever-changing world.
Okay, the uh, reading of the Open Public Meetings Act, the New Jersey Open Pe- Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right to the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provisions of this act, the Clifton Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the city clerk's office, Clifton Public Library Administration Building, Senior Citizen Nutrition Center on cable TV, in the local press, on the district's website, and mailed to presidents of parent-teacher organizations. This meeting will be tape recorded in accordance with Policy 0168. At this time, the Board will be convening into executive session to discuss some special education matters. Uh, we will come back for the regular Board of Education meeting starting at 7:00 PM. No action will be taken in executive session. Do I have a motion to go to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Daley, second by Mr. Casper. All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, so moved. Mr. Mount, please take us into executive, thank you.
Sorry, I'm resetting the breakout room. Give me about 30 seconds, we'll have it all resolved.
We didn't get in yet?
Hear me?
We're in the main session now? Hello?
Uh, Ms. Danny, you should see an invite to join the executive session. There was a 30-second hiccup, but all is good now.
Okay, because it looked like we were back out in the, in the main session.
Correct. Do you, do you see an invite to go back to executive?
No, I don't see anything. I see an executive session there, but no, I don't see.
Yeah, I don't see anything either, Eric.
I see the executive session like blocked out there, but you know, I, I see just the four of us here, Ross, Eric, uh, Mr. Tejan, you know.
Yeah, it's weird, I think.
But I'm not in the, I'm not in executive. Should I even come back?
I'm actually wondering that. I'm seeing Tejan, Tomassevich, Awad, and Danny. Um, still in the main room, so.
Yes.
Do you see any invitation to join exec session?
No.
No.
No, I didn't get any.
Yeah, we had the original, but then it got, uh.
Okay, so I think that's, I think that's a very good, um, good approach. So if you leave and come back, we'll get you right in there.
I will.
Mr. Awad, if you could leave the meeting and rejoin, I'll bounce you right in. I'm not sure what the, what the hangup is here.
Mr. Mount, just let me know when we're live, okay?
We're live right now.
Okay.
I have just a couple people still switching from exec session to the normal session.
Okay. We move that podium out of the way.
Mr. Smith, looks like everyone's in the regular session.
Thank you. Can Mr. Gengaro move that podium?
Mr. Jim Garrow, would you mind moving this podium for us, sir?
The one up on top.
So, somebody's come.
Huh?
Let's go, let's go, Kane. Mark, those doors could be, Heather, those doors could be open too. We're in public session now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gengaro.
All right, everyone ready? I know we're waiting for DeLeese, but we could start. Okay.
Perfect. They're welcome to come in. They just need to be six feet apart.
Okay, I'd like to call us back into regular session. The board met in executive session to discuss some education, special education matters. No action will be taken. Mr. Usee, roll call back from executive session.
Mr. Awad.
Here.
Ms. Bassford. Ms. Beltran.
See, Canova, Canova's frozen.
Mr. Canova. Yeah. Mr. Daley.
Here.
Ms. Danny.
Here.
Mr. Casper.
Here.
Mr. Abidrabo.
Here.
Mr. Smith. We have a corner.
Here. Okay, next we'll have the adoption of minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion?
No move.
So moved by Vice President Abidrabo.
Second.
Again by Mr. Casper. Discussion. If not, roll call.
Mr. Awad. Ms. Beltran.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Mr. Daley.
Yeah.
Ms. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Abidrabo.
Yeah.
Mr. Smith.
Yes. I see we have, I'm sorry, I guess we should have, we could bundle those two.
You could, yeah.
Yeah, we have adoption of our regular meeting minutes of March the 4th and meeting minutes, special meeting of March the 8th. Put those together.
No move.
Do I have a motion? So by Vice President Abidrabo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Casper. Discussion. See, none, roll call.
Mr. Awad.
Yes.
Ms. Beltran.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Mr. Daley.
Yes.
Ms. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Abidrabo.
Yes.
And Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have communication and announcements. We don't have any. Next is a presentation of reports from administration advisory committees and special committees. At this point, I will turn the meeting over to our business administrator, Mr. Michael Usee, who will make a presentation on the preliminary budget.
Thank you, President Smith. Just give me one moment to share my screen.
Sure.
Can everyone see it well? All right, we'll get started then. Good evening, commissioners, and everyone virtually attending tonight's meeting and those who are in person at the high school. I'm Mike Usee, the district's business administrator. Quickly, I'll introduce Dr. Robert Tozzi, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Mark Teigen, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Ms. Kusalevich, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, who is going to jump in during this presentation regarding some curricular highlights and staff additions. Also, Mr. Tomasevic, our Assistant Business Administrator, who will also be assisting in some slides later on. Just to be clear, this is not the public hearing on the final budget, but a brief overview of the 2122 preliminary budget that's required to be submitted to the county office for educational adequacy and technical compliance. Tonight, the board will be voting on a resolution approving the submission of the 2122 preliminary budget to the county office, which can be changed from now until the public hearing in May. I wanted to start off the presentation with a quick snapshot of the district's operations to try to put into perspective of how large of a district we are. The Clifton Board of Education has 23 facilities consisting of 14 elementary schools with an annex, two preschools, which is, which are our Clifton Early Learning, Learner Academy, the CILAs, two middle schools, an extremely large high school, the administration building, the transportation garage, and the stadium. During normal activities on a daily basis, we transport over 2,200 students in district with 52 buses and vans. The district employs over 1,600 full-time employees and has 10,948 resident students enroll. We have 28 different sports, 53 teams, 73 coaches, two athletic trainers, with over 1,250 student athletes, with also 150 vast co-curricular activities and clubs throughout the district. The district followed this budget schedule for the 2122 submission per the Department of Education. The preliminary budget will be voted on during tonight's meeting for the submission to the county. My office must submit the preliminary budget to the county by Monday, March 22nd, and the county office has until April 20th to approve the preliminary budget. The advertised budget will be in the Bergen Record tentatively Thursday, April 29th, and the public hearing on the final budget will be during the May 6, 2021 board meeting, which, which meets, which meets the deadline of being able to hold a meeting, what we have to hold in public hearing by May 7th. And then the last day to submit to the county, the final budget is May 14th. Now I'll go over the main focus points of the budget. On the revenue side, the budget calls for no tax levy increase from the 2021 current school year into the 2122 school year next year. We had a state aid increase of 12,756,421 or 29%, nearly 30%. The budget maintains its full unassigned fund balance, which is essentially a surplus account, which is capped at 2% of our budget by the state. So we maintain the whole thing. We're not using anything to balance the budget. However, the budget does call for using excess surplus from the 1920 fiscal year of 1.8 million that the board put away back last June. Lastly, on the revenue side is semi, which is the Special Education Medicaid Initiative of 330,000 and miscellaneous revenues of approximately 850,000, which consists of just interest, facility rentals, school fines, insurance dividends, and prior year refunds. On the appropriation side, the budget maintains all staffing and programs with the addition of 21 instructional and other staff members. Ms. Kusalevich will go into more detail about how the budget maintains and expands programs and supports instruction throughout the district on the next couple of slides. For out-of-district placements, we have 119 special education placements in private schools, county special services, or other schools, and we have budgeted 743 students at PCTI, the VOTAC. One of the biggest increases in any budget area is the charter school tuition, which I say this every year, it comes directly from the DOE. It increased by 2,089,188 or nearly 28% from the current year. So while the district did receive a significant increase in state aid, there was also a significant increase in charter school. And then finally, budgeted salaries and employee health benefits, which make up approximately 75% of the entire appropriations budget. Now I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Kusalevich, for the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Mr. Usee. If you can go to the next slide for me, please.
It's lagging. I apologize for that. There we go.
So this budget with 0% tax increase, if you can go back a slide, please.
There we go.
Thank you. Maintains our current staffing and programs. Our main focuses are the completion of our one-to-one Chromebook initiative throughout the district, infusing technology and 21st century skills in all programs, our support of the defined STEM program across content areas and grade levels, differentiated instruction to support diverse student needs from preschool through 12th grade, our excellent fine and performing arts programs, our core literacy and math programs, the instructional teaming that takes place in grades 6 through 9 to support students' success and also help them with their transition through high school. We have three main academies at the high school with 17 career concentrations. We continue to grow our dual enrollment programs and of course, support our district-wide PBSIS program to support social emotional learning. And to round out the whole child education, we have extensive sports and extracurricular and fine and performing arts programs. The additional staff included in this budget really focus on social emotional needs as well as the special needs of our specialized education population. Five of the positions are counseling positions. This includes two elementary counselors, which will allow each of our elementary schools to have a full-time counselor. This adds two middle school student assistance counselors for our students who need support in that difficult middle school age and an additional high school counselor. We're also adding an ESL high school social studies teacher to address our electives and social studies needs for our growing English language learner population. And finally, 11 special education teachers. In that area, we're looking at two to address our preschool disabled program, four elementary special needs teachers for resource room, speech, and then the self-contained autism and multiply disabled programs, three in middle school, also one self-contained for the autism program and two resource room, one high school resource room and a high school, and a special education behaviorist. These positions allow us to keep our students served in the least restrictive environment while also providing self-contained programs in district to help keep students who need more intensive support closer to home in their schools in our town. May I have the next slide, please? Some additional staff include two computer technicians. As was mentioned on the previous slide, we have now gone fully one-to-one in terms of devices just in the course of this one school year, and that requires significant addition of support to support our technological infrastructure, software, and all of these additional devices. We're requesting an additional bilingual secretary for our welcome center. At this time, our registration program has access to both Spanish and Polish-speaking staff members to help translate for those parents who come in who need the support of another language. Clifton's three main languages are Spanish, Polish, and Arabic. This position would help support the Arabic population in Clifton. And finally, we'd be returning a custodial night custodian supervisor, which will return us to a fully-staffed custodial supervisory team to manage and oversee over 90 staff members throughout our 23 buildings. Thank you, Mr. Usee.
Thank you. Just moving on, so our district's total tentative balanced budget is 209,000,000, 209,108,698, which is comprised of the general fund that contains the operating budget and the capital outlay budget, special revenues, which are federal grants and state entitlements that the district receives, and also our debt service. And I'll go into all these on further slides. Here's a quick overview of the general fund revenue sources. As I stated before, the tax levy has no increase from current year, so it stands at 134,259,260. Also, as I said before, state aid is the biggest increase in the revenues of the 12,756. Extraordinary aid is budgeted slightly higher than the current year to to reach a more actual number of what our extraordinary aid is. We are not using any fund balance, but we are using the excess surplus the board put away last June of 1.8 million from the prior year, the 1920 school year. Also, budgeted miscellaneous revenues and the Medicaid reimbursement. Also, just to note, almost 70% of the district's total revenue is funded by the tax levy, while state aid is about 28.6%. So the majority of the revenue is funded by the local tax levy. Here's a quick overview of the general fund appropriations or expenditures broken down in major categories of the budget. I won't go through every line, however, everything is relatively consistent with the current year, except for the major increase to the charter school budget. Projected charter school enrollment comes directly from the DOE with the release of the state aid numbers. You'll notice some increases on nearly every line, and that's mostly salary projections and also the 21 new staff members that we're budgeting. Also, to put this budget into perspective, salary and employees, as I said before, consist of more than 75% of the total budget. I'll quickly, now I'm going to quickly go over a five-year trend of our major revenue sources, and that's obviously the tax levy and state aid. Here's a five-year trend of the district's tax levying state aid. For the last two years, the board has presented to the public a 0% tax levy increase, and for four years, the board has presented less than a 1% tax levy increase, and also has never gone over the 2% cap since it's been instituted in, I believe, 2010 or 2011. When it comes to state aid, the district has seen significant increases over the past five years, which includes the 2122 budget. However, last year's state aid was taken from us, so we only got about a $2.5 million increase instead of the over 7 million we should have gotten. Um, so this, the, and that's being made up with the current year's state aid. So while we only got two and a half last year after they cut us the state aid, it seems that they're equalizing it where they're giving us what we should have gotten in 2021 and then even further. So that's good news. The state's plan to fully fund the formula is by the 24, 25 school year, so hopefully they stick to that plan because it would obviously greatly benefit us because we've been so underfunded since the inception of the Saffra formula or the School Funding Reform Act formula. If the fund, if the formula was fully funded, Clifton would receive approximately 75 million in state aid instead of this 55 million we are receiving. Here's a quick overview of the special revenue budget. This consists of our non-public state entitlements and all other federal grants the district receives. For budgetary purposes, state and federal grants anticipate a 15% reduction from the current year. The district has completely transitioned from the federally funded preschool expansion grant to what's at the bottom here, the preschool education aid, which is state-funded. And I would like to note that the preschool education aid that we get from the state for three- and four-year-olds requires a general fund contribution in order to receive the state aid funds, so that's that PEA general fund contribution, and that's something that was already budgeted for, for the special education inclusion preschool students. So it already existed in the budget, but now we just have to report it differently in Fund 20 or the special revenue fund. Now I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Kusalevich to explain how each grant supports the district programs and serves, and how it serves various specialized populations of students in Clifton.
Thank you, Ms. Usee. The special revenue programs vary, and they come with various restrictions and support different types of programs and different types of students. Our smallest program is the Perkins VOTAC Ed, which supports our high school marketing academy and our marketing lab. Title I provides many of our extended day, week, and year programs in our Title I schools. And Title II supports teacher preparation and training. Title III is additional funding to support our ESL students, also with extended year summer programs. We have over 600 English language learners enrolled in our district at this time. Title IV provides a small amount of funding to support our social emotional learning programs, which in this year of COVID are very needed. Our IDEA basic and preschool supports our special needs program, which addresses over 2,000 Clifton students, but this does not fully fund special education needs. We have a 21st century program that gives us a wraparound after-school and summer program for over 200 students at schools 4, 12, and 17, which we have been able to continue even in this virtual world we've been in. Our preschool education aid provides fully-inclusive preschool classrooms for about 600 students on an income eligibility and also first-come-first-served basis. And finally, our climate grant is a federal grant that has allowed us to fully expand our PBIS program across the entire district, supporting social emotional learning, security, health, wellness, and just overall transitions for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Here's a very quick overview of our debt service for the 21-22 school year. The debt service is dropping by $37,400 from the current year. The remaining debt service reflects just one bond that doesn't fully mature until the 25-24-25 school year, and that is the, it was the high school annex project back when we got the debt, but now it's CEELA-B, which is one of our preschool schools, preschool programs. Now, if I could introduce Mr. Thomassevich, he's going to go over the next couple of slides, which is some of the most important information, the city's ratables and the tax impact, which is very interesting, even though we're giving a, or presenting a 0% tax levy, this, there's actually a decrease in tax levy, and he's going to explain that.
Thank you, Mr. Uche. Good evening, board members and residents of Clifton. The main focus when we prepared this preliminary budget for the 21-22 school year was the mindset of one Clifton. This is the mindset that has been set by the superintendent, Dr. Robotozzi, and everything we do at the Clifton Public Schools District. The budget addresses the current and future needs of Clifton students and staff while keeping in mind the overall tax impact on the community of Clifton. Mr. Uche has provided an overview of the 21-22 preliminary budget relating to the various focus areas for revenues and expenditures, as well, Ms. Kusolevich has illustrated that this budget maintains the current staffing and district program while also adding the necessary additional staffing to better support the students in the district. With that being said, let me discuss the overall tax impact that this preliminary budget will have on the residents, residents of Clifton, and I hope to make it a little bit easier with what Mr. Uche has indicated with, you know, the tax rate actually decreasing, even though the tax is flat. There are two factors that impact taxes for the residents of Clifton. The first factor is the tax levy that is budgeted. As the tax levy increases, it will result in an increase in taxes on the average assessed home. They have a direct relationship to each other. Some additional information on this slide, slide as it relates to the assessed home value in Clifton, as you see, the average assessed home is valued at $178,554. This is the value that the tax levy is applied against. This is calculated from taking the total tax value for the residential properties and dividing it by the number of residential properties on the tax roll of the city. So some residents might be questioning that this average value doesn't seem accurate and that an average home in Clifton is worth more than $178,554. That is correct. That is called the true value or fair value. To convert the average assessed home to the true value or fair value, you would take the average assessed value of $178,554 and divide it by the county equalized ratio, which is currently 50.21%. And the number will translate from the assessed value of $178,554 to the true value of $355,614 to allow the residents of Clifton to get a better understanding as far as how it really will impact, you know, their home value. Also, an approximate tax point in Clifton for the 2021 year that this budget relates to is roughly about $533,405, which will affect the average assessed home by $18 annually. Let me recap what the total proposed budget, budgeted tax levy is in this preliminary budget, as Mr. Uche has mentioned earlier in this presentation. The proposed general fund levy is $134,259,260, which he had indicated represents a 0% increase from the current year budget in the 2021 school year that we're currently in, as well as it's a 0% increase from the prior year budget relating to the 1920 school year. The district has kept this tax levy flat for the past two budget years, which is extraordinary. In addition to the general fund levy, there's also what Mr. Uche has mentioned relating to the debt service levy, which is $932,000, which represents a 3.86% decrease, or roughly $37,400 decrease from the current year budget that we're in of the 2020-2021 school year. The debt service levy has been historically decreasing from the prior years as a result of no, of no new debt being added and the annual maturities on the one outstanding bond that Mr. Uche had indicated decreasing. So the total, so the recap of the total school levy is $135,191,260 that is being proposed in this budget, which will result, results in a total decrease of $37,400 from the current year budget that we're in of 2020-2021. The second factor that affects, that impacts the taxes for residents of Clifton is the net taxable valuation. The net taxable valuation is the total assessed values of the properties include, of the properties in Clifton, including residential, commercial, industrial, public utilities, et cetera, that is on the tax roll of the city in which the budgeted tax levy gets applied to. This has an inverse relationship than, as I explained with the tax levy. As the total net taxable valuation increases, it will result in a decrease in taxes on the average assessed home, because the total tax levy gets applied to a larger number. The total net taxable valuation for the 2021 year pertaining to the 2021-2022 budget This is an increase of $11,563,200 from the net taxable valuation for 2020 pertaining to the 2020-2021 budget. Next slide. All right. So overall, let me just go over the tax rate. Based on this reduction in tax levy levy and an increase in net taxable valuation, the proposed tax rate for the 2021-2022 school year will, is estimated at 2.5345%, which represents a decrease of 0.0062% from the actual rate, from the actual rate for the current year of 2020-2021 of 2.5407%. This decrease in rate will reduce the average assessed homes' school taxes by $11 from the current tax amount of $4,536 to now $4,525 annually. So overall, the average assessed home will have a decrease of $11 annually for this coming budget year. And that concludes the tax impact, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Uche.
Yes, so that's fantastic information that, because the city's ratables are going up, there's actually a $10 decrease per assessed home in Clifton, and then $1 from the debt service going down for a total of $11 decrease in next year's taxes. So that's good, that's great news. That concludes the presentation. I just want to repeat, this is not the final budget. I know I've said that a bunch of times, and I could feel, we could field any comments or questions from the board. And I will stop sharing my screen, one second.
Mr. Uche, Mr. Kusolevich, and Mr. Thomassevich, a great job on your presentation to the board and to the public. We know a lot of great time and effort and work went into putting that together. We, we appreciate that a great deal. Mr. Daly, you have a question?
Yeah, just a couple of things. And again, first of all, I thanks, thank the staff, putting Ms. Uche, Ms. Thomassevich, Ms. Kusolevich on a great job. Mine's more clarification, so the public understands. And Ms. Thomassevich, since you had this part, the 50.21% assessed to value, that comes from the publications by the county. That's correct?
That, that pretty much comes from the state. It comes from the state tax of appeals. They, they put it, yeah, they, they put it out annually for each county, and what that really does is they, they try to bring the assessed values that each, each city among each counties have on their tax roll to a true value. You know, just, just.
Yeah, the point, the point is that we're not making this number up. If you go on to the county's assessment, you'll see this exact number on, on web site, which, which Mr. Thomassevich is saying that it's basically generated by the state. And every county has a thread on their website that describes that. The next question, and maybe more from Mr. Uche, we're going to get, I don't know if they're going to call it CARES money coming in, but we, we've been kind of notified, but we don't have any official notification, so we can't not put that figure in our budget. So when that time comes, how we're going to use that money, we'll have the budget. It's not going to be in the budget that we're going to send to the county, because that, I don't think they're going to get an affirmative letter that you're getting X amount of dollars. So just wanted to confirm that, Mr. Uche?
Yeah, so I've tried to focus on this presentation on just budgeted items, so it doesn't really include any, the ESAR funds or CARES funds, not only because we didn't get them yet, but they're going to be designated for specific, for specific things that, for compliance reasons. And also, the presentation doesn't have anything to do with the referendum either. It is trying to show just the operating, the annual budget.
Right. I just wanted to make sure the public understand that, you know, they've seen some, we're getting $28 million in CARES money, always going, we don't officially have that money, so, and until that happens, we cannot publicly share in our budget.
That's correct.
That's kind of what I was trying to emphasize there. And I think just also, my, I calculated our portion of the tax levy is also number, I believe it's around 46%. It might be a little lower right now of the, of the total budget county and, and the city and the library and us, we're about 46%. In many towns, that's 50% or higher of your total budget that you're paying in your, in your state taxes. And the other thing I would ask, not for the near future, if the administration could give us a stated word chart in terms of, I know you had one, I think, last year, Dr. Robotozzi, but to show that and, and the positions that are there. So I think that's a good piece of information to have in our back pocket. Again, I wish to thank the staff to do a terrific job getting this information. And this is the most comprehensive summary that I've seen since I've been in terms of presenting to the public. So there's a lot of detail in there, and it's a little overwhelming sometimes, but there's a lot of detail in there that are useful. And again, thank you, Mr. President, and I'll yield rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Are there any other board members that have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing, again, we thank you very much, Mr. Uche, Mr. Thomassevich, and Ms. Kusolevich. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move on. All right, the next order of business is board committee reports. I again ask my colleagues to please just summarize their reports and don't read them word for word for the public and just to get a general idea of what our, what our committees were like. So we have quite a few today, so we keep them moving. If you could just summarize them as briefly as you can. First one up is Transportation Food Service, Mr. Casper.
Okay. Board members present for our meeting that evening was my selfish chairperson, Mr. James Daly, Mr. Fahimo Abadrabo, and Mr. Jim Smith. Administration present was Dr. Danny Repertozy, Mr. Mark Teigen, Mrs. Janina Kusolevich, Mr. Eric Thomassevich, and Ms. Liz Nick. Number one, purpose of the Transportation and Food Service Committee. So President Smith discussed to the administration the purpose of bringing the Transportation Committee back and adding the food service component to the committee. He explained that this committee will provide a great benefit to both the Transportation and Food Service Departments of the district. Overview of the Transportation Department. Mr. Casper had inquired about the current overview of Transportation Department. Ms. Nick discussed with the committee a brief overview of the Transportation Department relating to the number of buses on hand, the number of students being transported in district routes, and how safety protocols are addressed. Also, she informed the committee that currently the district contracts transportation routes for students being sent out of district by Northern Regional Education Service Commission, or in some instances, the district pays aid in lieu of transportation. Mr. Daly inquired about having administration put together a cost analysis to determine if it is beneficial for the district to transport these students being sent out of district rather than contracting with an outside vendor. Administration will look into whether there will be a cost saving to the district if the district transports these students being sent out of the district. Mr. Thomassevich and Ms. Nick provided information related to the committee about the current process the district performs annually for the replacement of old buses and vans. Mr. Thomassevich explained to the committee that the district currently purchases three buses and three vans annually through a five-year lease purchase agreement. In addition, three buses and three vans have been used for about nine years of service, getting auctioned off every year. Current issues. A, space at the transportation yard. Ms. Nick addressed to the committee that the biggest issue affecting the Transportation Department is the current amount of space at the transportation yard. The committee discussed possible options to address this issue. B, need to expand the amount of buses. Ms. Nick explained to the committee the potential need for additional buses and drivers for any future route times changing relating to pickup and drop-off times at certain schools and for the current spacing of students on buses related to the COVID-19 safety protocols. She estimates about nine additional buses will potentially be needed. Mr. Thomassevich informed the committee that the administration might be able to use ESAR II funds, which is also known as CARES II, that the district was recently awarded. He had reached out to the State Office of Fiscal and Data Services and the County School Board Administrator to get clarity if the purchase of these additional buses would be allowed under the federal grant. Number four, current staffing in the Transportation Department. President Smith inquired with administration relating to the current staffing in the Transportation Department, and if there are any current staffing issues. Ms. Nick informed the committee that there are no current staffing issues, and the Transportation Department has been working well with current staff on hand, and everyone has been doing a great job. Here ends my report.
Thank you. Are there any, are there any questions from board members?
Okay, Mr. Canova.
I saw on there that it said we're looking at purchasing nine buses. But I know with COVID.
Six.
Six or not?
Nine. Yeah, she has nine, yeah.
Six, that committee.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
What I, I also saw was that we've been rotating buses out and every nine years we put them up for auction. I know that with COVID being here, we didn't run our buses very often. So I'm wondering, instead of purchasing new buses, if you could just forego the auction for this year and use those buses instead of going out and purchasing something.
Mr. Canova, it's a good.
Mr. Canova, that's a good point, one that has been brought up with the with the administration. As you know, um, there is an administrative team working right now on a administrative and team of teachers working on a possible revamping of the elementary district schedule. And as part of that proposal, if it does come to fruition, we may need the additional buses plus the ones that we sell because of because of COVID. So that's still in the early process of we're trying to figure that out. But we may want to keep, we may want to keep all those buses and buy the additional. And just for the record, we were, since that meeting, we were able to confirm that we can utilize the cares funds for.
Good.
Very welcome news. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Casper, if we can just get a clarification from uh from Transportation, I I believe she said on the on the committee report that it was do you know, I thought she told us that she purchases six new buses every year.
Yeah, it's, yeah, we do, we do purchase the three buses and the three vans, but she had suggested nine additional. That's what.
Is that in this current budget?
It it is not. However, um, that's where the cares funds is going to come from. Time come in.
Okay.
Okay.
Of course, if the board approves, we're not even there yet.
Yeah.
Uh, in the very early phases of discussion.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we'll move on to the next report, which would be the Finance Committee. Um, Mr. Daly?
Okay, uh, Mr. President, keeping your edit, the minutes of the Finance Committee are much, much less detailed than the presentation we were all given to by the public. So uh, there's nothing in the minutes that is not in that presentation. The presentation's a little more detailed than that. And the only thing I would ask is just possibly the administration post staff presentation on our website because it's a quick presentation and anybody wants to see in detail, it's fantastic. So it it should answer anybody's question who have on the budget uh very easily. It's very detailed. And I'll leave remarks. I do have to read one thing. Uh, board members present, besides myself is Mr. Canova, Ms. Beltran, Mr. Smith, administration president is Mr. Teigen, Mr. Kusilevich, U C and Mr. Tomasovich. And the meeting went from two thirty M to thirty P M on March fifth. That concludes my report.
Excellent report, Mr. Daly. Are there any other board members that have questions about the um Finance Committee minutes? If not, we'll move on. Uh, Ms. Danny, next is Municipal Alliance.
Um, so Municipal Alliance met on March eleventh uh from six to seven thirty. Uh, board members present were myself, uh, Jim Daly, Fahima Abadrabo and Jim Smith. The district administration was Dr. Robert Tosi um and Eric Tomasevic, the Assistant B A. City Council members were William Gibson, Lauren Murphy and Rosemary Pino. And city administration was Nick Volano, um, city manager. Attendance roll call was taken um by Mr. Tomasevic and um uh, Mr. Volano was, uh, took the city commissioner's side. Um, so the items of discussion, the referendum presentation. Dr. Robert Tosi provided a presentation to the city council members and the city administration at the Municipal Alliance regarding the upcoming one hundred sixty eight million bond referendum on April twentieth, twenty twenty one. Dr. Robert Tosi discussed the projects included in the referendum and the importance of those projects. Um, he provided a general timeline for the referendum um from the vote on April twenty 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 one. Uh, hold on a second. Um, of when the work is expected to be completed, including the estimated start date of the projects and when tax bills were changed. Dr. Robert Tosi outlined the finance, um, the financing aspect of the referendum with the state covering almost fifty five million and the impact of the, on the average assessed home in Clifton. Um, Dr. Robert Tosi com- completed his presentation outlining the voting information for the referendum. Mr. Volano recommended to the committee and the administration to emphasize um, to the community of Clifton that the athletics projects that are included in this referendum are included in the fifty five million dollar state aid. Dr. Robert Tosi also emphasized that the athletic upgrades account for less than point nine percent of the total project costs. Councilwoman Pino inquired relating to what locations the voting will be held at and how the community will be informed about the locations. Dr. Robert Tosi explained that the voting for in person will be open at six locations. School five, school nine, school twelve, Christopher Columbus Middle School, Woodrow Wilson Middle School and Christopher uh and Clifton High School. Um, Dr. Robert Tosi explained that the information for voting has been posted on the district's website and there will be more information sent to the community in the coming weeks relating to the referendum and voting. Um, Councilman Gibson inquired relating to the district's plan in providing the information to the senior citizen community about the referendum. Dr. Robert Tosi explained that the district has currently sent out postcards and another postcard will be mailed out in the coming weeks. Also, he mentioned that the district has put the referendum information in the Clifton magazine. Dr. Robert Tosi asked the city council members and the city administration if the district can place the referendum voting date and information in front of City Hall. Mr. Volano approved the request to place the voting information in front of City Hall. Mr. Daly explained to the city council members and the city administration and district that the district's preliminary budget for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year and the impact that the funding that these projects would have on the future budgets if the, of the district, if the referendum does not get approved. Dr. Robert Tosi asked if the city council members and the city administration would like to have him and a board member present and prepare a presentation on the referendum at the upcoming city council meeting. The city council members, who are members of the Municipal Alliance Committee and Mr. Volano were in agreement with having Dr. Robert Tosi and a board member do a presentation on the referendum at the April sixth, twenty twenty one municipal, uh, I mean, um, at the just the council meeting. Um, tennis court projects. Uh, Ms. Danny asked the city administration about the status of the tennis court project at Robin Hood Park. Mr. Volano informed the committee that the funds for the tennis court project at Robin Hood Park is through Community Development Block Grant, C D B G, and the city is in the process of obtaining the necessary funding. Um, Mr. Smith inquired about the possibility of expanding the current amount of tennis courts to the five courts needed for tournament play at the Clifton High School rather than the Robin Hood Park. Mr. Volano explained that this portion could cause, cause could pose a challenge due to expanding the courts into city property due to the historic preservation process. The Municipal Alliance Committee will bring the tennis court project and possible options back to Athletic Committee for further review and discussion. The Municipal Alliance Committee will discuss with the city um at a later date, whatever we come up with in the athletics. Um, twenty twenty one safe and secure grant. Mr. Volano discussed that with the committee about the safe and secure communities program funding for the state fiscal year twenty twenty one will be thirty two, thirty two thousand four hundred. That's a fifty percent reduction from the prior year. Dr. Robert Tosi explained the importance of this program within the district and the district's desire to expand with more law enforcement personnel. Temporary storage of district buses, Mr. Abadrabo discussed with the city, the district's current issue with the amount of space for district buses at the district's transportation yard and the possibility of utilizing the city's D P W site for temporary storage of district buses, a shared service agreement if needed. Mr. Volano explained the city's D P W site is almost at max capacity, but it can accommodate about five to six buses for temporary relief if needed. Five handicap spot at school two. Mr. Smith inquired with the city about the possibility of adding a handicap parking spot to school two. Mr. Volano will look into the possibility of adding that spot to school two. Status of development project at the distillery property on Paulson Avenue. Mr. Abadrabo inquired that with the city about the status of the development project at the distillery property on Paulson Avenue. Mr. Volano informed the committee that the development project is at the planning board stage. Annual meeting with the city, with the board and city council. Uh, potential Mr. Smith discussed with the city the possibility of setting up an annual meeting, a committee of the whole with the district board members and the city council members to discuss concerns um within the Clifton community. Mr. Volano expressed to the committee that having an annual meeting with both district committee members and the city council members might not be able to be done, but he'll look into it. Parking and traffic issues at school sixteen, Mr. Abadrabo discussed to the city um, the parking and traffic issue at school sixteen. Mr. Abadrabo asked the city administration if there's any possible options to eliminate and correct the parking and traffic issue at school sixteen. Mr. Volano informed the committee that this issue typically would involve the county, but mentioned to the committee to have a dis- to have the district come back to the city once the district's engineer have prepped the area and prepared the necessary designs for improvement to the parking and traffic at school sixteen. Any questions?
Mr. President, if I, if I may, uh, Ms. Danny, thank you for reading that. It's actually not any question value if I was there. But just in correction to the uh memo that was read, the uh handicapped, um, the handicap parking is actually at school fifteen. Mr. Smith, if I'm correct, not school two. And then also just to reflect the buses we're discussing about moving um also um, in the back area of school fifteen, which is supposed to be used as a playground, but there is about six, seven buses parked there for storage. And that's where the question of the T B W is to get them added there so the kids don't have to mind the buses and play on the other side of the lot. This way they're they're able to play. Um, and then uh, if we can um talk about um down the road of the engineers, I believe we got the uh, the school sixteen parking and the tennis courts, we we have to take a look, a look at. Is there a timeframe, Ms. Danny, of when uh we would look at those?
What do you mean? Um, well, probably when, you mean with Municipal Alliance?
No, no, for the engineers to come out. Uh, actually, that that may be through administration, not through you. I apologize.
Yeah, I mean, um, I have.
Well, the administration and facilities could, could, that should uh come through them.
Okay, thank you.
Also, just to big, just to piggyback on that uh, school fifteen buses, the buses that are there are not buses that are operating in our our fleet right now. They are buses that are going out for auction. So we're just waiting for the auction to send those buses out. So they're basically just storing them there in school fifteen. So we're looking for another option of storing them somewhere else until the auction, the auction of those buses is off. So that's uh, that's where that discussion came from. Thank you, Ms. Danny. Anyone else? Okay, so, uh, Mr. Canova.
Uh, so I have a few questions here. So you mentioned the buses. So going back to what we were talking about before with buses, is that three additional to the three that we would let go this year? So therefore we would have six? Is that what we're saying? Right? Because if every year we're auctioning off, we already have the ones from the prior, there still haven't been auctions off, that leads me to believe we have six currently, right? Of the nine.
Three and three.
All right, so it's really only three then technically we need to purchase if if we keep all these. I'm assuming.
Three and three. Three and three are there. Those are the three and three that are, that we have in the budget. So she's just asking for, she's asking for additional three buses.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. So brings that number of nine not to three if we decide to keep everything. So we only have to reveal the budget for three.
But if the other thing comes to fruition with the revision of the.
No, I understood. Yeah, yeah. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that correctly. The uh, the handicap that we talked about at school fifteen, is that something we could just do at all schools? Is that just painting the blue lines and putting up the the sign? Because I think that every school should have a handicap space.
Yeah, um, Mr. Canova, this was specifically, I believe they have a handicap space in their, in their parking lot for the faculty. It's maxed out. So we felt that in front of the school, it's a one-way street. There's plenty of space in front of the school that if the city could put a handicap spot out there, that that would allow any visitors coming into the school to be able to park in a handicap spot since there would be nothing available in the faculty lot for them.
But if I may, Mr. Smith, that's actually, um, if we're looking at handicaps, that's actually a good idea combining both of your discussions that, yes, we happen to see it passing by school fifteen and we brought it to to the city council. But maybe Mr. Canova does have a point where if through you to the superintendent, if we could just make sure we have enough handicap parking spots um at every school, then maybe we can go back to Municipal Alliance say, well, listen, if you're willing to do it there, this is what we're looking at too, going to all twenty-three buildings that we have, if needed, of course. But this particular Joe was brought to the city council because it was street parking. Um, it wasn't because of the parking lot. Uh, the parking lot, as Mr. Mr. Smith said, was in overflow. That's why they're using those buses from the parking lot and putting it into the kids' playground area. So which also gives an overflow of handicap and there's maybe about three hundred feet of empty dead space on that one way in front of the school. So there was about a good amount of space where they can fit two or three handicap spots when they come back those. So that's why it went, that's why it went to municipal.
Yeah. And uh, the school sixteen traffic view. Now, I'm familiar with school sixteen, but I don't know how the flow works in the morning. I know they have that long landing. I'm assuming they pull into that long landing, they could drop off and then continue down the path. And they, there's like a circle somewhere in the middle and then an exit. So I don't know which side they come in or out of. Um, but is is the issue with people waiting to turn into there or is that just congested?
So first of all, the issue at school sixteen, uh, luckily I don't have to drive in, I walk in. So I'm seeing it as a parent um coming in, right? So when you come into school sixteen, first of all, there are about three different rows trying to get into the lot in the morning. Takes me about a good twenty-five minutes just to drop off your kid from the entrance to the exit point of that roundabout. Now, but the, but the, that's what you're talking about. So that's congested first of all. But what I was talking about is there's a railing going parallel to, uh, away from Moncl- Mon, sorry, away from Montclair onto your right-hand side going towards Clifton. There's a railing on the right-hand side parallel to the school. Now, cars, while they're waiting for their students, their their kids, they park along that rail. Now, remember, Grove doesn't have any sidewalks. So when you park a a parallel to that rail, you're talking about two and a half feet, maybe two feet between your left mirror of the car and that yellow divided line. So what I'm, what I'd like to do, what I'd like for to see happen, and I've been talking about it for a while, is there is an easement coming down of a hill in front of school sixteen, which is um also across from that circle you were talking about.
Yeah.
If we created some sort of easement to create a jug handle where parents can pull in, at least if we can bring it over in a little bit, it'll help us cause of not having accidents. Because to be honest, walking, I've been hit, I'm sorry, I've almost been hit a couple of times just walking across from there or walking across the street. So there really isn't. So imagine a car on your left-hand side and a car on your right, you really only have the divided line in the middle as cars are going around and weaving in and out. Um, and that is a county road, so we technically can't do anything, nor can the city. So what Mr. Volano said is that, okay, guys, you want this? Create it, pitch it, and we'll carry it.
So in turn, in turn for safety, can we, can we have people pull into that that lot instead of having them let out on that main road there?
So that would be through, obviously, administration because school sixteen, what they do is, and again, they try to do the best what they can with what they have. From a parent standpoint, as I see it, but obviously that would be. From a parent standpoint, as I see it, but obviously that would be through administration because I know that the lot is closed after school. Because their lots are already full because they already have cars in there. And that would cause more, that would cause more of a congestion with all the cars already parked. Remember, school sixteen is a small school. It's a small lot and I seen that there's become more of an overflow and that's why we're having problems, I think, with all our schools. I can safely say as a resident and as a parent as well. Is that a lot of our schools are being over are overflowed. So we need to go to a small school. Congestion in that parking lot, it'll take forever to get out and forget about getting in. But I think that's why they block it off. So we need to start thinking, I believe, outside the box about school sixteen. And again, I'm not trying to target school sixteen. Because my kids go there. I'm doing it because again, yes, they go there as a parent, as a board of ed member, because I see it every day. Uh and I see it more since they started, but. You know, there is the wood, there's the trees behind it, there is that are fallen, there's there's the lack of parking in front of the school. There is between that driveway between Holster and school sixteen. So maybe we need to do an assignment or we need to do some sort of projection or something about all our schools and see how all parking about all our schools are going. So we should need to go outside the box.
I know there's specifically a couple of schools. I know fifteen was one of them. Uh I know when we visited Woodrow Wilson, they mentioned, I know that five was one that we were talking about, even in uh facilities, there was supposed to be some sort of like bus.
From the back end, yeah.
So I don't, I don't really know what's happening with any of those. I thi- I think there's like, you said, a lot of these schools that uh that need some. Some TLC when it comes to the to traffic and parking and whatnot. So there could be something bigger that, the report that we have or something we could do, some other subcommittee gets formed to to sort of deal with this.
So then if I, Mister Smith, to you the superintendent and to facilities, maybe we can bring this, you know, knock this down to facilities. And have facility committee take a look with Mister Marchionne and the superintendent and yourself. Uh to see what all are, the all all schools look like. And if there is some TLC that we need to make sure is taken care of, um I mean, if we're going for referendum. Then maybe at least on our end internally, we can look at what the parking looks like and what else we need to do, not part of the referendum, but. Beyond in the future, what other projects we need to put on our list. If that works for you, Mister Smith.
Yes, absolutely. Mister Canova, you done?
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Bassford, you had a question?
Yeah, uh no, I don't have a question. I have a comment. Um school fifteen was never resolved with the traffic issues. Uh that was just, it went, it just went into the abyss. And also school five, uh we was, there was supposed to be somebody that was supposed to talk to the county. About putting the cut-in in front of the school on Valley Road. It wasn't behind, it was on the front end. Because the buses blocked the traffic on Valley Road uh on the side of the school, so they they have plenty of room in the. Parking lot. The parking lots were flipped, they can push the parking lot back, put this cut-in, the buses can get into this cut-in. And alleviate traffic going on on uh Valley Road. That was never addressed either. So I don't know, a committee needs to be formed to actually go. Also, school eleven is a hot mess. Um the traffic is down the one-way, people are triple parking, you can't get through. So um my my recommendation to to you, to the superintendent, is that every single school with traffic has to be addressed. If we need to get the police involved as well, uh there's got to be some kind of relief for the parents. Thank you.
If I may, Miss Smith, I don't think we need to create another uh committee. I think just if we can do facilities, this. We already have committees going, so I might as well just carry and go through the proper procedures. But I agree with Miss Bassford about and but. Agree and disagree. Agree that we need to look at them, but disagree is not just the ones with traffic. I think we need to look at with all of them. Uh across the board. This is why we don't have to revisit this again.
Um just.
Okay, so we'll send that to facility.
President, Miss Danny? Yes, uh I just want to say that we have, you know, always talked about that um in municipal alliance. And then what the cops do is, you know, they they do try to, they 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 ticket. And um but unfortunately, like we just go in a circle with that. Um we ticket and then it's um, you know. Uh lessens it a little bit and then, I mean, we've always had the traffic issues and we're always bringing them up to municipal alliance. And then when that happens, you know, officers go and they ticket the parents, you know, which obviously causes a lot of mayhem, but. You know, does work, but then it it just comes up again. I mean, it's, you know, so um. Yeah, I do think it's an issue, but it's just something that has always just been going around in a circle.
Mr. Smith?
Okay, so.
Ms. Smith?
Committee, yes, Ms. Bassford.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Um yes, it's always been an issue, but there's a new police chief in town, maybe. Uh he can come up with some solutions. I think but it's gonna have to be many different things. It's gonna be have to maybe traffic flow. Maybe car directions, maybe cut-ins, maybe moving of lots, whatever it is that it has to take and including a ticket blitz. It has to be a full frontal force of every element involved in order to, in order to make this work. It's not gonna work with just a Band-Aid approach. Once and for all, it has to be looked at. And the committee has to keep on top of this is because fifteen always is a major issue for years. School five has been a major issue for years and school eleven has, the parents came to several meetings to complain about it. So we need to, we need to really work on this as a as a whole. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, Mister Casper Education is next.
But please unmute Mister Casper.
Oh, you're muted, Mister Casper.
I always do that. Thank you. Okay, so education, special education committee meeting. Uh took place on March eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Uh the attendees were myself as chairperson, Mister Smith as board president. Administrators in attendance were Dr. Robert Tozzi, Mrs. Kusilevich, Ms. Rotolo, Mister Doctor and Ms. Rogers. The guest was Ms. Rachel Harrington. Number one, CHS student events, Mister Doctor and Ms. Rogers. Mister Doctor and Ms. Rogers gave us an update regarding planned events for this for CHS. The senior prom is currently scheduled for June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one to be held in a socially-distanced manner. At the Castle Catering Hall. This will be an indoor event seated at tables without dancing. This follows current health guidelines with which may change. The junior class was surveyed and there will be no junior prom this year. Senior class day and senior week activities were discussed with plans being developed. Academic awards and senior athletic award ceremonies are currently being planned to fit the current health, safety and gathering size regulations. These are being planned as outdoor events. Preparations are underway for in-person graduation for the class of twenty twenty-one. Contingency plans are being developed due to changing criteria. Options for several smaller ceremonies and for a full ceremony are in the works to be finalized as state guidelines are released. Action informational. Special education update by Ms. Rotolo. Ms. Rotolo spoke about upcoming activities for students. And nurtured heart approach training for staff. She discussed parent training and learning opportunities, all which are sent out via our district distribution center peach jar. Ms. Rotolo discussed a number of special education referrals for students from preschool to grade twelve for the school year. An open meeting called Coffee with the Supervisors will be held on April seventh. For parents to drop in and meet with the supervisors of special services. The meeting was adjourned at four fifty-nine P M respectfully submitted by Mrs. Kusilevich. Does anybody have any questions? Alright.
Seeing none. Thank you, Mister Casper. Next we have the Passaic County School Boards Association, Ms. Bassford.
Yes, um the uh Passaic County School Boards Association met on March fifteenth at six thirty. It was virtual. Uh the meeting is opened by myself followed by the flags, an introduction of the current. Passaic County School Boards Association Executive Committee. The report from the uh New Jersey School Board Office was submitted by Dan Sinclair. Media past president Dan Sinclair gave an update on the nominations and how they were picked. Um I'm gonna, it's very long, so I'm gonna kind of condense it. Uh he, the one thing I want to focus in is is that Passaic County School Boards Association is in a process of calling for uh. Officer candidates to serve three positions. President for two years, first vice president and second vice president, all for two years. Deadlines for filing, a petition is April fifteenth. All boards will be notified weeks prior to the election of the slate of officers the nominating committee will select. Um all are encouraged to consider volunteering. It is a rewarding experience and a good place to start. Um there is a nominating meeting. There's five people. Um Mister, Doctor um Larry Feinsad gave a a welcoming to the committee. Uh he hasn't been on Zoom all year with us, but he made to this March meeting. Um he talked about um. Uh how it was a year ago uh on Tuesday of this week that uh they went remote and then on today, actually. The um governor told all schools to go remote. So we've been in this a year. Uh none of us dreamed about it. He continued about how he's proud of the Board of Education. And that um he really um is proud of the teaching staff superintendent and the school staff. Uh he wanted to talk about uh the resolutions that went down to the state. Uh he feels that um the governor made his decision to move teachers up on the list of vaccinations because of. Outpouring of support for various um districts throughout the state of New Jersey. Um there is um, there's going to be um uh uh article in the school board notes. Uh published about uh different ways uh others uh all different uh districts are vaccinating or are trying to get their staffs vaccinated. So maybe when we get that, we can publish that so other people can see. It's a really good article. Um there is a program that's gonna be on the twenty-fourth and anybody can go to this. It's the um Public Schools Labor Management Collaborative and it's gonna have many of of powerful guests. Of art on there. They're going to have the um, the U S Secretary of Education, the National Education Association President. And he's hoping that the commissioner and the governor of New Jersey also join in. And they're gonna talk about pertinent issues that are going on in education. So I encourage everybody to look at school board notes. For the link that they will be published in that as well. Um he talked about the budget. Um he talked about the American Rescue Plan. And then he he talked about um that we are, the state of New Jersey is number one in U S world and news reports. And he wanted everybody to, everybody that are on boards to extend to each member a thank you for making that happen. So from Doctor Feinsad, thank you to everyone. Frank Casper uh reported on unsung heroes and I'm proud to say that Clifton and Butler. Are the only districts that have submitted a name so far, deadline March thirty-first. So one of our students is going to be honored as an unsung hero by the New Jersey School Board Association. In the swing at the May meeting, at the Passaic County meeting. Um from the field, Kathy Heller reported about Read Across America and about how. Members should look forward to next year. Hopefully, we'll be in person to do that. And she reiterated again about the importance of doing these superintendents evaluation. And that uh make sure that we are set down July first. Um the legislative update was from Chris Jones from the state. Uh he reiterated what Doctor Feinsad talked about the um about on the uh on the budget and other bills as well. The keynote speaker was on the legalization and history of the overview of the law of marijuana. Uh by um Seth Hipton uh from a floor firm and then had a presentation from his colleague Caitlin Plisca. Uh Plisca, sorry, from the same thing on, from the same firm on the uh policies and procedures in a school setting. The PowerPoint was sent to you earlier week. I hope you get to look at. I will be uh bringing that po- um those policies and that information. To our policy committee um to make sure that our policy is in place to protect the district from any possible liabilities. And that was at the meeting ended at eight o'clock. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
No questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Bassford. We'll move on. Uh our student representative here to give uh his report. Uh Max Rubin, we thank you uh for being here and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mister Smith. Hello, everyone. It's good to be back at school. Um I'm going in person tomorrow and so far it's been pretty awesome. Um it's nice getting out of the house and even though it's a lot less kids than I'm used to, it's still nice being in the school building. Um so I just have a few updates. Um first off, I mentioned last week about the mental health survey that was conducted. Um so the survey is finished. We had a total of four hundred and forty responses across the high school, which is. A small minority of the high school population. I'm pretty sure there's around two thousand five hundred kids in the high school and we only had four hundred forty. But that's still a decent amount. Um and I'm going to have a meeting with Mister Doctor, the student assistant counselors. And fellow C S U executive members tomorrow afternoon to discuss further mental health strategies and ways we can improve the mental health. Of Clifton High School students and even just Clifton students in general across all grades. Um I wanna thank Mrs. Bassford for sending me the Eye on Mental Health document. Um I read through the document and there was one idea in particular that I really liked that I'm going to. Um that me and the other C S U members uh talked about how we can do it ourselves, a similar idea. That was presented in the document and we're gonna bring it up during our meeting with Mister Doctor tomorrow. So yeah, once again, thank you for sending me that document. It was really insightful. Um the referendum citizens committee, oh yeah, I just wanted to quickly um just plug in the website just in case. Uh people are still struggling to find information on the referendum. You can go to the Clifton Schools website. On the homepage of the Clifton Schools website, there's a link in red bold at the top of the homepage. And um it's, it says Clifton Votes, April twentieth. You can click on it and it sends you to a website with all of the information that you'd wanna know. On the referendum. Uh the vote is April twentieth, so um. Uh I would ask everyone to spread the word about voting for the referendum. Also, if you're eighteen. Uh like myself, I'm eighteen now, which is pretty sweet. You can vote for the referendum. And if you're seventeen, you can even register to vote for future votes um in the future. Um and the link to register to vote is um voter dot S V R S dot N J dot gov slash register. That's voter dot S V R S dot N J dot gov slash register to register to vote. And I would recommend all students and recent graduates, if you haven't registered to vote yet, you should do so as soon as possible. And if you're eighteen, you can vote for the referendum. Um I always just plug in SAT testing just in case anyone's listening. The future dates are May eighth and June fifth. You should register as soon as possible. Seats may or may not be available at CHS. And speaking of SAT testing, I wanted to quickly mention, uh there was a digital resources website that. Me and um some other C S U students helped uh formulate together with the media center staff at Clifton High School. Um and it's a website that has uh resources for studying for ACTs, SATs, AP exams and just various other. Uh normal coursework uh classes. There's a several YouTube channels that you can visit. There's also six different test prep websites. On the website. There's over forty-five hard copy test prep books and and over forty-five ebooks. And there's instructions, a video on how to purchase, or not how to purchase, because it's the media center. On how to take out uh hard copy and ebooks in the media center, specifically test prep ones, if that's what you're interested in. Um and in order to get to the digital resources website, you can go to the Clifton High School website. Go to additional resources and then go to, there's a should be a link under additional resources. Wait a minute. Okay, actually I left out something. It's Clifton High School website, then go to the students tab. So students tab. Then additional resources and then it says digital resources and test prep for students. And you click on that and then you're you're in the website. Um that's, that's it for this week. I wish everyone um happy Saint Patrick's Day. I know that was yesterday. I hope you all had a good Saint Patrick's Day. Uh and one more thing I want to plug in is the CHS morning show has been celebrating uh. It's National Women's History Month and we've been doing um, we've been celebrating that a lot. Especially throughout this week, we've been highlighting various important accomplishments and amazing accomplishments of women throughout history. And we've been doing that on the morning show. Um and in general, um we're just trying to spread awareness, you know. Making sure, making people, making sure people are aware that it is Women's History Month. It's it's important. I think it's often overlooked. So yeah, um that's pretty much it for this week and I will see you guys next board of ed meeting.
Max, thank you very much uh as always for very informative report. And we appreciate it a great deal and uh everyone should get to go on and watch the morning show. I don't know what day it was, but. Uh Max really put his skills to work and uh was mobile. Um on a scooter, I believe, giving uh his morning reports. That was uh, that was pretty neat, Max. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Smith.
Alright, anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you so much.
Again, being here. Thank you. Okay, we move on to um public recognition. This portion of the meeting is open to the residents and non-residents of Clifton. The purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and or directly related to the operation of the Clifton Public School District. Residents and non-residents are requested, if in person, to sign the register provided for its purpose. All speakers are asked to state their names, municipalities. All speakers are asked to state their names, municipality, and subject matter. Before speaking, comments are, before speaking, comments are limited to five minutes per person. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and are responsibly forthcoming if and when appropriate. Your questions may or may not be addressed by board members. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees aboard are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of the state of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility nor will be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Okay, our, we'll do our in-person first and then we'll move to anyone that is honorable. Mr. Bruce Jak, you have the floor first.
Thank you.
Jeremy. Thank you, Dr. Robertozzi. Thank you, President Smith, Vice President Abidrabo, and the rest of the board for allowing me to speak tonight. And I just want to thank everybody for helping to get the schools back open on March the 9th. And I want to know why the kids aren't allowed in five days a week. Why don't parents get an option to have their kids go to in-person learning five days a week? What's, what I've been told is that the deep cleaning occurs Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and an extra deep cleaning on Wednesday occurs. Why can't the same deep cleaning occur on a Wednesday as well or on a Tuesday evening? So that the parents have an opportunity to send the kids to school in person five days a week? And please correct me if I, if I'm wrong. And why are classes only open until 1:00 PM? If it's because you don't want the kids to eat together in the gym or cafeteria, they could eat in their classrooms like they do with their snacks every day as well. We are trying to, I'm asking for the board to give parents an option to have their kids have in-person learning as much as possible. The Clifton, Clifton Schools has time to lobby, do lobby campaigns to float a bond for $162 million. And they have time to talk about the traffic patterns going in front of schools, but they don't have time to strategize how to get the schools open for longer, for those in person, to have the kids, give the kids an option to go in school in person longer. I heard from two parents this week that the last six or seven days that their children have been in school in person have learned more in the past six days than they have in the past month. So these are the high-risk kids. There are so many high-risk kids in this district. And when there are neighboring districts, including New York City, who have, who, who have an option to go in-person schooling for five days a week. We need to make every attempt to do that over here in Clifton's district as well. So I'm asking everybody to do the best they can. And again, thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you and God bless America. Have a good night, everybody.
Bruce Jak. Next, we have Gloria Llama. Strolling her way down.
Are you sure you want to see me? There we go. All right. Good evening to everybody. My name's Laurie LaLama and as you know, I'm the president of the CEA. I have a little smorgasbord of different ideas for tonight. So first, I want to thank the board, the executive team, Dr. Robertozzi, for the air purifiers. They are phenomenal. We are very happy to have them and thank you for using that from the Esser funds. We still have concerns over the increase of the COVID cases. And I know that it's not within the district, but it's the community. So what I'm asking the community is to really think twice, use your masks, stay social distancing. So we can continue to protect our kids, their families, and our staff. Any of us, I don't care if it's Dr. Robertozzi and, and everybody in the district. Really want to choose for what they're doing in their classrooms, the paraprofessionals, the nurses, and I don't want to miss anybody. Child study team, custodians, counselors, secretaries. We've all worked hard and it's, and we're a family and I think that's the important idea here. Now, people have been mentioning learning loss, but I think we're forgetting something important. Our kids and our families and our staff are surviving a, a global pandemic. So the things that they have learned, the things that are new, they've done a great job. Granted, there is some learning loss, but they have overcome. They've learned, earned, and did all these phenomenal activities in the building. Their principals have been helpful. They've done a great job, the vice principals, the supervisors. So we're all in this together. All right. Now the next thing. Would the board write a letter to the commissioner for, to not do the standardized testing? I know all of our unions together have sent that down to Trenton and have forwarded to DC. So I think that's an important thing. I would like to work with you on that if you did want to do that. All right. Oh, school 11, they had their referendum last night and the kids and the adults learned more about the referendum. And the kids played games and the HSA really did a good job. So I just want to let the board know. All right, Rutgers Labor Management. So we've been in this program for a little over a year now. And due to COVID, we haven't really met. We met twice, right, Dr. Robertozzi? So this meeting that we have next week, Dr. Robertozzi and I were asked by Saul Rubin. Commissioner McMillan, Governor Murphy, NEA President Becky Pringle, and about 400 other people. So we're really putting a great positive light on all of us here. I really want to say important. And the last thing. I know, Mr. Daly, we're fighting against public education. So I bought two books, one for the Board of Ed Library about it. It's from a professor, Nancy McLean. I was in a workshop with her over the weekend and phenomenal. And the other one is for the administrators. So when you have a chance, probably sometime next year, but if we can read it and we can chat about it, I think it would be a very helpful thing to understand how important it is now to protect public education. We have the Koch Brothers, we have Alec, and they're really doing bad things to public it. So I really, if you have a chance, I purchased some for you so you can read them. Otherwise, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Llama, and thank you for the books. Okay, now we're going to move to our virtual callers. Mr. Mountain, if you have anyone to admit to the room or anyone to admit to the room?
Yes, we have three. Brian Ily and then Jaxel and then Daniel Mello. So all three are already admitted.
Okay. Okay. Brian Millie, you have the floor. Brian Millie?
Looks like Brian's been connecting to audio for some time, so there must be an issue there or they've walked away.
Okay.
So I would suggest moving on to Jaxel.
Okay. Jaxel, you have the floor. If you would state your name, municipality, and subject matter for the record, please.
And I apologize, Mr. Smith. As soon as we were talking about it, Jaxel has left. So next up is Daniel Mello.
Okay, Daniel, you have the floor. If you would please state your name, municipality, and subject matter for the record.
Andrea Aykasa, so six East 8th Street. Okay?
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, good evening, everybody. First of all, thank you for all the efforts to make it possible, the updating in the buildings. I really appreciate that. I have a couple of questions for the board and some concerns. One is that the district distributed a flyer about the LGBTQ Inclusive Curriculum Workshop called Cycle of Power and Privilege. And this was sponsored by the Clifton Education Association. Even though I'm aware about the new law that mandates to teach LGBTQ curriculum in the classroom signed by the governor, seems unfair that other groups more vulnerable don't get the same kind of attention and resources. As part of an autistic kid, I'm fully sure, fully, completely sure, I never received a flyer distributed to the entire district with the sponsor of the Clifton Education Association to promoting inclusion of autistic kids or a workshop open for teachers in the community about autism. According to the state data, the LGBTQ community represents 4.1% of the population of the entire state. 51% of this group are whites. However, one in every 32 kids in New Jersey has autism. Hispanics are the 20.9%, but no Hispanic history curriculum are going to be teach. Blacks are the 50% of the population, but not black history in the curriculum. And I'm not talking about assemblies. I'm not talking about celebrating one month. I'm talking about the LGBTQ curriculum is going to be taught in the classrooms systematically. And I would like to request the Board of Education to do a workshop or create a referendum in the excellent way that you're doing it to educate and, and promote the referendum for the updating of the buildings. In the same way, it's very important for parents to have a better understanding that this is going to happen next year. It's a law that our teach, our children are going to be taught about this new curriculum. And I want to see if the, if the Board of Education can provide this workshop, especially for parents, to know exactly their rights to review and dispute in case that they have a conflict with personal beliefs or religious beliefs. Because obviously there is like a conflict for many religious groups over here. And I, I, it caught my attention, like I said, because as a parent of an autistic kid, I never, I never thought so something in, in this incredible massive supportive way for this group. There is a vulnerable group and they are there, one in 32. And yeah, it seems unfair to me, to be honest, that the Clifton Association, the Clifton Education Association is getting put in this. And I understand this, it's nobody's fault. I, I understand it's a law and I'm not saying that the Clifton Board of Education is doing it. But yes, as a resident, I would like to request that you somehow create a forum or a workshop where parents can learn about their rights and learn about what is going to happen about this LGBTQ curriculum next year. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. O'Rourke. Can we shut that laptop off now since we don't need it? Thank you. Ms. O'Rourke, are you, you have the floor? Are you in the room?
All set. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just finished Dinner with the Bunny for our elementary students, so pardon the background. I'd like to say thank you for everyone who came to visit the schools for Read Across America. I know a lot of our students did enjoy the, all the unfamiliar faces and face to names that sometimes we talk about them in our classrooms. So thank you so much to all the commissioners and the administration who did virtual read alouds to our schools and our students. It was much appreciated. I also wanted to thank all the parents and families that are attending our events. This month, we had our special ed department did a pride event that they did Create Your Own Book Scene. And so they had a bag full of goodies. They had paints, Play-Doh, they received a free book. So our special ed department, thank you so much for doing a pride event with us. Like I said, we had Dinner with the Bunny today, so we had 400 meals delivered, handed out for our Clifton families. Sheila will be doing a spring planting event in, it got moved from March to April. They will be doing an April event. And also, School 17 will be doing a STEM kindergarten night for our upcoming events. So we just wanted to say thank you so much for everyone for participating during this time as a pandemic. And we hope to see everybody else at our next events. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. O'Rourke. Appreciate you, all your, that you do. Thank you so much. Ms. Mall, anyone left in the waiting room?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, you know, motion to close.
Okay, motion to close public portion by Vice President Abidrabo, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Awad. Okay. We will now have unfinished business. Okay, we have none. We'll now move on to Education Administration. Okay, we have EA1 through EA6. EA1, revision of the 2020, 2021 calendar school year. Approval, EA2, approval of summer school agreement between Clifton Board of Education and Northern Regional County Educational Services Commission. EA3, acceptance of the 2022, 2122 New Jersey Department of Education Preschool, Preschool Expansion Aid. EA4, acceptance of School-Based Healthcare Solutions Network Incorporated Grant. Five, EA5, abolishment of regulation. EA6, attendance report. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bassford. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Awad.
Yes.
Ms. Bassford.
Yes.
Ms. Beltran.
Yes.
Mr. Genova.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Abidrabo.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next under personnel. We have P1, renegation, P2, retirements, P3, leave of absence, P4, amendment of leave of absence, P5, amendment of maternity leave of absence, P6, amendment of appointments, P7, increase in salary, P8, increase in salary, P9, additional appointments, 2020, 2021 PBSIST members, P10, athletic paraprof- P10, athletic power professionals. P11, conference requests. P12, substitute appointments. And P13, personnel appointments. Can we have a motion to move the group?
Motion.
So moved by Vice President Abidrabo, second by Ms. Danny. Gotcha. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question.
Ms. Bassford?
On, on, the one for the cafeteria renovation, is this just to move the money for the, is this just to change it on the long-range facility plan? Is that what this resolution is?
That is correct, but we're not in F at the moment.
I'm sorry. My screen moved. Never mind. It's what happens when you come late.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Awad?
Yes.
Ms. Bassford?
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Beltran?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Mr. Daley? I see him saying yes. Ms. Danny?
He said yes.
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Abidrabo?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next under finance and facilities, we have F1, adoption of the 2021-22 preliminary budget. F2, approval for joint transportation agreement, 2020-21 school year. F3, approval to proceed with school facilities, project cafeteria kitchen renovation, CHS. F4, approval to establish maximum travel expenditure amount for the 2021-22 school year. F5, certification of budget line item accounts, January 2021. F6, financial reports, January 2021. F7, modifications to the 2020-2021 budget, January 2021. F8, use of facilities. F9, claims list. Move the group?
So moved.
So moved by Vice President Abidrabo, second by Ms. Bassford. Any discussion?
I have the question about cafeteria renovations. Is this to change the long-range facility plan? Does monetary amount have to go on here? Because we approved it before, but shouldn't it state there what we're spending again? Just questioning that.
So this is, so you are correct. This is to amend our LRFP. We're not at the bidding stage yet. So once, once we go out to, once this is state-approved and LRFP is amended, we'll eventually get the specs together, go out to bid, and that's when we'll bring it back.
Okay, do we have a maximum that we're going to spend on this project?
The budget estimate was 1,800 to 2 million.
So can't we say not to exceed in this? I just feel more comfortable when this is a monetary thing?
No, because we have no idea what the bids are going to come in at. And obviously, the board can reject any bid that comes in if they don't feel that it's.
Pretty aware. I just, I don't feel comfortable. Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Canova?
I have a question on F2. F2 doesn't really have any content there. Everything is to be determined.
Exactly. It's to be determined to use the Sussex County Cooperative if needed. And then if any routes do come up, then they'll come back to resolution.
Okay.
Mr. Smith, to Joe's question, why can't we be, can't we put not to exceed? This is an open forum. Anything can go in this. It's usually when you put resolutions, does it have some kind of dollar amount? Because you're approving funding, so can't we put not to exceed?
Well, at the moment, we're not approving funding. It's just to join the Sussex County Joint Transportation Co-op. And if we do get, if we do need and get a route, then it'll come back to resolution for all the information.
So why does it just, why does it have the check? Because it confuses a lot of people. Because I could see what Joe could say, because you see a dollar sign right then and there. You think that there's money associated to it. So you know, if we're just approving a point, you know, joining them, then why is it without like, you know, the little box and the whole thing? So I'm just confused.
Just of how the table is in the content of the resolution? I'm not understanding.
I think just moving, I think she's saying rather than having a table, she's just worded to say this is to approve, to have a discussion with the co-op, and then when we have bid, actually, she's saying the dollar sign is a total confusion to people. So it's more of the layout than the content.
No, because it says at rate indicated. It says here, "The program to transport eligible student on the following route, comma, at a rate indicated." It's blank. We should not be passing a resolution that's blank with dollar signs. I'm sorry. If that comes out and at the rate of, if it's a resolution that says we're joining, I'm fine with that.
I mean, this is just the way we've been wording it forever. I mean, we can make it, we can word it any way we'd like. But if any route comes up from now until June, we will. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just asking the board, are they okay with the way the wording is now, or do you want administration to reword?
I mean, there's no line item, and there's no budget attached. So we're not writing checks to, you know, we're not writing blank checks to people who aren't even on this list. There's nobody on this list, so we're not writing checks to anybody.
And if a route comes up.
But maybe Ms. Bassford has a point that if we just remove the table, I mean, again, I agree and disagree. I agree that it could look confusing, but I also disagree that there's no line item. There's no route number. There's no school. There's no contractor.
It's not that. It's blank. It's blank. And it's, the resolution is speaking to the ad rate of, it could be filled in. Somebody can hand out something in this, and it goes into record. And then we didn't approve it because it didn't have anything in it. It's just not good to have something in it that's blank.
Mr. Mr.
Next.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I have a recommendation that might solve this issue. We can do the chart and end the resolution after the work program. So we'll just resolve that the Clifton Board of Education approved the transportation agreement with Sussex County Cooperative Transportation Program. Done. So you're just approving us to join the transportation agreement, and then any routes that we may potentially use with them will be on a future board resolution.
That's correct.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Daley?
I just found out that our superintendent has mind-reading talents. I have the exact same suggestion as the superintendent. I'm okay with the superintendent's suggestion.
Okay, are the, are the first and second of the motioners okay with that change?
Yeah.
The minutes will be reflected that way.
With those change, okay? With those changing, roll call, please.
Yes, so F1 through nine. Mr. Awad?
Yes.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Ms. Beltran? Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Ms. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Abidrabo?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to the next portion of the meeting. It is board member comments. This day, the day we start with Mr. Daley.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to thank all speakers who came up tonight. I'd like to also thank the, but the people who did the budget presentation tonight, including Mr. Uc and Ms. Kusilevich, Mrs. Somashevich, again, a great job. It is Women's Appreciation Month, and if you're looking at some, I don't know how many people have seen it. I watched the movie several times. I would suggest one of the things you might consider looking at is Hidden Figures. It's a terrific story, and I think everybody should watch it. It has to do with a number of Black men who were originally employed by NASA, and they were highly skilled mathematicians, and they were, of course, they had to overcome discrimination in the workplace. But it's a, it's a really movie story. That's one of many, many things you could look, but that's, that's one of my favorite. On the COVID issue, as stated earlier, this, this is a group effort. You, you know, everybody has a responsibility here, including and especially parents. So please, please, this is not over yet, and we'd like to get this over or advanced as soon as possible so we can all mix and mingle like we, like we used to. But there's still some time and effort that needs to be into this to make sure you're not spreading it or bringing it around. So that's the responsibility of our parents and individuals too. You can't be irresponsible. So wear a mask, do whatever you have to do, get your vaccinations, so we can get out of this predicament sooner than later. Wish to wish everybody a Happy St. Patrick's Day, which was yesterday. And on the other side of my heritage, tomorrow is St. Joseph's Day, and it's when you eat fair fattening cakes. At least, that's how I was brought up. So with that, I'd like to wish everybody a good day and see you at the next meeting. Thank you. And don't forget the referendum on April 20th. We'll get more at our next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Daley. Next, Ms. Danny?
Yes. Okay, hold on a second here. Okay, so I'd like to say thank you to all the speakers. Max, thank you for that information on what's being done for Women's History Month, which is obviously the month of March. Ms. LaLama, thank you for fighting the good fight. I also wanted to say from last meeting, you know, congratulations on the governor giving you a call. I was really feeling it with my arm being broken. So I just wanted to make sure I, you know, told you that this week. And, you know, thank you, Ms. LaLama, for always trying to get the word out and trying to help out in your, in the fight for education, students and staff and everyone. Thank you, Ms. Kusilevich and Mr. Uc for your presentation. Always very informative. And I want to say, you know, I hope everyone had a nice St. Patty's Day, enjoying some corned beef cabbage. I know I did. And I don't think we have a meeting before, so Happy Easter to everyone, Good Friday. Those that celebrate for the spring break that the students will have, stay safe. You know, families, just consider where you're going and know which areas you're going to. Again, I was listening on the news, and I know they said that, you know, everything that we've done could potentially be undone with a lot of the spring break. So, you know, just, you know, be safe in what you're doing, be conscientious, you know, observe the rules, the, you know, social distancing, the masking and things like that. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm also going to keep this brief. Like always, I'd like to start off with thanking our retirees for your service to our district. Enjoy your retirement as much as you can. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I was taking some notes. I'd like to bring back to committee, so this way we can look at, take a closer look at them. I'd also like to thank all of administration for putting together a great budget this year with a 0% increase. So hopefully, we can have our taxpayers get a little break. And I'm also, I would also like to take the opportunity to thank Mrs. LaLama as you continue to push our, help push our education forward in Clifton. And lastly, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy Easter, if you celebrate, and a happy Passover. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Casper. Mr. Awad?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll also be keeping this brief. Thank you, Ms. LaLama, for attending today's meeting in person. I also was brought to my attention through social media, you know, certain students and parents concerning hygiene products for the female students in our, our, our school district. You know, that's something really great that someone actually brought that up. And that's something, you know, maybe we could discuss with the administration and the board if we're able to, you know, help in that certain department. I also wanted to just, you know, spread a message of love. You know, love always conquers hate, no matter what situation is. You know, we, we are a nation full of foreigners coming from different parts of the world. And, you know, uniting together is more important than dividing. You know, love and, love and, you know, peace will always, you know, conquer. And that's pretty much it, you know. That's pretty much my comments for the evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Awad. Ms. Bassford?
Yes, good evening. Happy St. Patrick's Day to my family of McBrides. My sister traced them all the way back to their heritage in Brooklyn. I had a great-great-grandmother that, that lived a very rough life. Her husband was struck by lightning and died. And it was a very interesting story. My sister's putting together a book, so I'm glad I could do that. Happy St. Joseph's Day to the people in my family that celebrates that, celebrate St. Joseph's Day. I don't. I'm not Italian, but there are people in my family that do because they're, they have Italian heritage. Happy Easter on April 4th. I forgot Mr. Uc to abstain on a check note 20233. I'm sorry, I'm a little out of sorts, but today's a really rough day at work, and I had to work late, so I couldn't attend. Every day should be National Women's Day. It shouldn't be once a month, one month of the year. It should be every day. We should honor the women. Being that this is National Women's Month, March, I'm going to put my, 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 my word of thank you to every woman, regardless of what you've done this past year to get through this pandemic, whether you had to be at home for a stay-home parent, learn how to become not only an IT person, but learn the platform of Zoom and every other, Google Meets and every other kind of thing that we put forward to you, to the, to the people in the grocery stores and the nurses and the women, the women health providers and our own nurses that are working every Wednesday at the vaccine site. Every woman, every teacher, every, every kind of different career that's out there. It should, you should be honored every day, not just one month of the year, and I thank you for everything you do. It has not been easy. Saturday, the 20th, marks the day that I went virtual for a year. Like Dr. Fein said in his minutes to our, in our meeting, that Tuesday, the governor last year would mark a year of Tuesday that we went virtual all the schools. And some people think we haven't come far, but a lot of people don't know the day in and day outs of what it takes to do what they do. It's not easy to go from in-person, two days a week, and then bring the students to remote two days a week. It's a really rough, rough setting, and I really want to applaud our teachers and our staff and our administration for doing what I consider a yeoman's job. So thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. With that being said, and have a good one. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Bassford. Next, Ms. Beltran?
Okay, I'll keep it brief as well tonight. I would just like to reiterate the need for the referendum. We need these improvements for the town, for the children, for the future children. This is a unique opportunity that we have to get a portion of the money back from the. from the state. And even though we are getting money through the CARES Act and everything else, we, this money is not going to be enough to cover all the improvements that we need, uh, in order to set our teachers and our students up for success. I would just like to take a moment to remember all the lives that were lost this past year here in Clifton and throughout the state and throughout the world, frankly. Um, as we move forward, it's important to remember the past and those that are no longer with us. Um, I hope everyone is staying safe and continuing to do so. Hopefully with the improvement of the weather and the mass distribution of the vaccine, the virus will start to calm down. And by next year, our children, as well as our staff, will be able to look forward to a more normal environment. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beltran. Mr. Canova?
Uh, first of all, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy St. Patty's Day. Thank you to Ms. Ms. Beltran for my festive St. Patty's Day ask. Um, I want to thank the speakers for coming out. Uh, special thanks to, uh, Mr. Uchi Tomeskevich and, uh, Ms. Kuchalovich on the, the, uh, report. I'm glad to see more, uh, technical roles put into the budget this year. I know we have our, our one-on-one initiative and with all those extra laptops, there's extra oversight into the IT infrastructure. So I am glad to see that as the budget. Uh, big highlight that it, um, of this budget is, again, speaking to what Mr. Daley said, is that it's another year that we're coming out at a zero increase. It's actually a decrease, um, you know, based on how it was presented, uh, of $11. Um, and, and that just is a testament to the group and, and how hard they work at this budget and making sure that, um, you know, there's no pork in there and, and that we have a nice tight budget for, for our, uh, students and our, our community. Um, the one other thing I do want to highlight is that, um, as you know, we've been underfunded for a very long time and slowly the pendulum is moving in our direction. This year, I believe it was somewhere around 52 million that we're receiving from the state where in previous years it was only 26 million. So it is slowly getting there and that is the work from, uh, from this board and from advocating, uh, with the community and coming out as a community as a whole and standing up for what we deserve. So that's slowly getting back to where it should be. I'd like to see that continue to go, which means that we, we can't take our foot off the gas, but we need to keep, uh, pursuing there. And that ties into our referendum because it's, it's that predicament that got us here. And I know everyone keep, keeps pushing it. And I'll say the same thing is this is an opportunity for us to take some of that money that they haven't been giving us and get it back in through our, our aid through a 33% discount on our referendum. So it's very important that, uh, anyone who is of age gets registered and, uh, and we get out to vote. Um, Ms. La Lama, uh, thank you for all that you do. I know you mentioned one thing about standardized testing. I'm on the fence with this one. Um, I think that as a whole, people believe in their minds that, you know, if, if we go to some standardized test, testing, it's going to be difficult and it may show numbers that are unfavorable, but I look to the positive in these things. So I think that throughout all this, we're going to find certain nuggets of information where there are success stories and we want to magnify those and want to find out where they are. And the way to do that, I think maybe, maybe through standardized testing where you, you find out that in some cases and scenarios that students actually have done better than they've done previously. Um, so because, I guess it's because, you know, the technical nature in me, I'm a sucker for data, but looking at the data, I think we can find those success stories and, uh, and hopefully branch out our online world. So while we're, we're stuck in line because of a pandemic, maybe this is something that, that will be the future. Maybe, uh, you know, as, as individuals continue to work for home, from home and essentially high schools preparing you for the workforce and for college, I think that that is an integral part in what you do. I think everyone here works from home a majority of time now at least, uh, or, or did work online on a computer for a majority of the day, doing research, et cetera, because that's just a, a function of many people's jobs. So I think there is some light in the end of the tunnel there. I think there is some light to be shed on, on, um, some positive things that, that could be happening there. So I would like to actually see some standardized testing to see where those things are. Um, school reopening, my daughters are ecstatic that the school reopened, uh, very happy to go back. Uh, they said they had a great time in the classrooms. Um, they felt safe. They wore their new masks. They even wore new outfits. Um, so they're very happy with that. Uh, and St. Joseph's, as we call it each day, basically, uh, and we, we all eat our zeppeli. That's what we eat, our little cream puffs. So, uh, happy, uh, St. Joseph's. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canova. Vice President Abujabo?
Thank you, President Smith. Uh, through you and through the administration, um, President Smith, if we can just follow up on the school 16 and the tennis court, the engineering and the handicap and all that stuff, you know, we talk a lot, a lot of stuff about in committee, but, uh, I think the, the hammering the stuff home with the follow-ups are, are going to be very important to make sure that committees are not, are not just only, um, having discussions and conversations, but also, um, hammering the issue home and making sure what we do discuss are actually meaningful. Uh, and not saying they're not meaningful, they are meaningful, but we follow up, make sure things get done. Um, on that retrospect, thank you to the administration, uh, Superintendent Robertozzi in your, in your administration and always making sure that our committees or committee meetings are being run, uh, smoothly and, and, and our agenda points, um, are, are brought to the attention of the full board. Also, thank you for the, the presentation of today. That is, um, a lot of, a lot of numbers and information to be put on, I think it was 18 PowerPoint slides. Um, so thank you for that. To my colleagues on the board, there is a diversity committee, um, on March 23rd, 2021, uh, on Tuesday. Uh, as you all remember, this committee started out as the superintendent's committee, uh, but now it's comprised of, uh, board members, um, under President Smith's, uh, administration this year. Um, if you can't make it, I believe it's myself, Commissioner, um, uh, Casper and Commissioner Beltran who are on it. Um, if you can't make it, please let me know. As Max Rubin mentioned, um, and I think we've been quoting Max Rubin a lot over the past few months, um, great representation of, of the, of the students, but I'll add a little bit. Uh, as we celebrate a Black History Month, we are now celebrating Women's History Month. Uh, these months come and go, um, and we should be celebrating diversity every day and all diversity, whether, you know, looking and making sure that there is equality for, and diversity to me is gender, race, cultural, religion, stability, uh, all communities, all differences, and make sure that there is not a glass ceiling for anybody, whether, again, anybody in the community, no matter background, no matter color, no matter beliefs. Um, I am nobody, I'm not better than the next person, the person next to me. God has created all of us equally. Um, and we are God's children. I know this is a public entity, but those are my personal feelings. So I'm going to leave at that. Um, on that note, um, as somebody else mentioned, there's not a board meeting before these next couple of things I'm going to mention, but Happy Easter, Happy Passover, Happy Ramadan, Ramadan Mubarak to our Muslim community. Um, and I just ask that we all respect each other. We've seen a lot of hate crimes on the rise. I've been reading a lot about LGBTQ, a lot about women, a lot about Asian American, a lot about disabilities, a lot about various communities. And I think just as others have mentioned on the board, let's learn from our mistakes. You know, we talk about St. Pat, we talk about St. Joseph, the towns in the Irish came here in early 1900s, late 1800s, more than early 1900s, and they faced a lot of hatred from various communities. But now we're celebrating St. Pat's Day, St. Joseph's Day because they fought through the strife of what they went through, but yet we still are not learning from our past. And the only, and, and history is our past and we need to learn from our past and understand what the future is to come and to bring. So it's more about love and passion. It's more about respecting each other. Um, thank you all who reached out to me in regards to my surgery on Tuesday. And of course, last but never the least, besides my wife and my mother and my sister, the apple of my eye, happy birthday, sixth birthday to my daughter. Uh, we went to Cafe Neo today. That was my promise. I met her in the morning and we went to it and she said, besides COVID, it's probably one of the best birthdays she had, just me and her eating her crepes. So, um, love you babe. And, uh, thank you. That's my comments.
Thank you, Vice President Abujabo. Um, I will be brief as well. I'd just like to, uh, again, thank, uh, Mr. Usee, Mr. Tomasevich and Ms. Kusilevich on the great presentation tonight. I hope the public understands, um, what a tremendous uh, job this is to run a district of this size, um, with this type of budget, with this type of funds and money and to have, um, Mr. Usee and his team, uh, put together this, uh, budget presentation for us tonight. Um, under, under certain some conditions, we, uh, we truly appreciate your, uh, dedication to all of you, putting this together. It was not easy. Um, I thank all the speakers that came out tonight and speakers that, uh, spoke virtually. The board is always interested in hearing from the public. So, uh, please continue to, uh, to come to the meetings or truly, uh, uh, come to Zoom. Uh, Vice President Abujabo, myself and Superintendent Robotozzi, um, on the first week of school, um, I called Dr. Robotozzi and asked if I could go and visit some schools to, to just welcome the kids back, uh, to let the staff and, uh, all of them know on behalf of the board that, uh, we appreciate all that they do and the great job that they're doing in the schools from, or the top administration down to the teachers and the extodians and everyone involved in the school. We, we just wanted to, uh, just welcome everyone back, extend our thanks. Um, and, uh, everyone was very appreciative and thankful to the board. Um, and, um, I've asked Dr. Robotozzi, we'll continue to do those visits, uh, and we'll hopefully get to, uh, all the schools. So, um, I thank all the schools for, um, inviting us in and, um, showing us the great things about your school and, um, also some things that we will bring back to committees that we found, uh, in, in, in walking those schools. So I thank everybody for that. Uh, board members, if I can remind you all, if you can't make a committee meeting, if you just kindly let me know, uh, this way I can have someone fill in that spot. And, um, if there's any board members that wish to attend the committee specifically to present something to that committee or, um, whatever, you could just, uh, ask me, uh, and I will, um, if, uh, there's an absentee or whatever, we could fill in, uh, you with that as well. Um, Vice President Abujabo, I was just going to mention, we, uh, had surgery this past week and, uh, we hope that you're recovering well and nice to see you here tonight. And, uh, you join Danny now on the Walk It Wounded of the Board. Um, so we hope that you all, uh, recover and can get back to us, uh, very soon. So that will end my comments. Dr. Robotozzi?
Mr. Smith, I want to thank you first of all. And if I can piggyback on what you said about the teachers, um, I just would be, um, would be rude if I didn't. To all the board members, when we walked around, everybody mentioned that we passed on a sentiment to all you, all our colleague board members, and they want to thank you very much for the air scrubbers. They really do appreciate them and they wanted to make sure that each one of you actually knew how much it meant to them. So, thank you.
Okay, now the board member comments are over. Dr. Robotozzi?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, uh, commissioners, community members. Uh, I just want to take a moment to thank all of our faculty, staff and administrators on, uh, a successful second reopening of, of school. Um, you know, so many people have worked so very hard to open up schools and to keep them open. And, um, I believe our schools are safe despite the number of cases we've had, uh, over the last two weeks. Um, so I sent a letter out to the community today and I want to just reiterate some of the points, uh, that I made in that letter. In the last two weeks since we came back to school, we've had 37 individuals, uh, that's positive for COVID. That has resulted in 167 students needing to quarantine and 31 staff members needing to quarantine. Uh, since reopening our schools, March 8th, uh, we've had to place two schools on short-term closures and one school on a four, on a short-term closure that turned into a 14-day closure. So I'm asking, begging, reminding everyone that we cannot do this alone. Everyone in Clifton is responsible for keeping everybody safe. Otherwise, we may face additional closures. I don't want that to happen. It is, I want to keep our schools open. I anticipate keeping our schools open, but to remain open, we all must adhere to the critical mandatory protocols that the district has in place. Consistent and accurate reporting of the daily COVID-19 screening for students and staff members. Keeping students home when their children are exhibiting any symptoms. If you're awaiting a test, if a family member is positive or a family member is awaiting the test, please do not send your child to school. Staff members don't come to school. If you do, you are putting other people in jeopardy and a positive test on your behalf causes a ripple effect that, that affects so many other than having to quarantine. And at a place like Clifton High School, there's only so many teachers that we can quarantine before we have to shut down because we don't have enough supervision for our in-person students. So please, it's very, very important. Also with the upcoming spring break, we want to remind everyone about traveling. Uh, there are quarantine guidelines that was sent out in my, uh, from the CDC that was sent out in my community letter today. Um, I don't propose to tell anybody what to do or where to go. I would just ask that if you are traveling, please do the right thing and follow the quarantine guidelines. I am happy to say that many of our staff members have already been fully vaccinated and I'm comfortable in saying that the vast majority of our staff who want to get the vaccine, at the very least, have an appointment. Um, I'm very comfortable in saying that. We've made a ton of progress in, in helping our staff and many of our staff members have done it on their own. Uh, but we've also, the district has all, also helped through the Clifton Health Department and through our partnership with Hackensack Meridian Health. So that's helping. And so there is light at the end of the tunnel, but we just, we can't give up now. We can't let our guards down now. So please, everyone. Thanks to our, um, business administrator, um, Mr. Usee, Mr. Tomasevich, Ms. Kusilevich on that presentation tonight. You know, two years in a row here that I'm superintendent, that I've seen this board with a zero percent increase of the taxpayers. And that's not because of me. That's because this board has consistently looked out for the taxpayers of the city of Clifton. You could have raised the, our budget 2% with a simple vote. And, and most districts do. They can raise it 2% without a public vote. In fact, this district, the, the board could have raised the, uh, budget by a lot more if we used bank cap 6% without a public vote. But this board has always been fiscally responsible. So that goes along to where we need your help with the referendum. Zero percent increase, actually a decrease in taxes, but we really need this $168 million referendum to pass for the critical needs of our district. And for those of you who would like more details on the projects, uh, voting information, financial facts and FAQs, please go to our website, www.cliftonk12nj.usvote. Just search for Clifton Public Schools. It'll take you to our website. You'll see a ton of information about the referendum. If you have a question that hasn't been answered at a board meeting or the, the community forum, or that's not answered in the, in the FAQs on the website, you have an opportunity on our website to type a question and you'll get a response in a reasonable amount of time. Some, some questions that might be a little more difficult, might take a little research to answer, but you will get an answer. And finally, I want to remind the public that there will be in-person polling on a Tuesday, April 20th. The polls will be open from 1:30 to 8:00 PM. The polling locations are School 5, School 9, School 12, Christopher Columbus, Woodrow Wilson and Clifton High School. You can also find information about voting by mail, application forms, uh, on our website. Thank you very much and have a great night.
Thank you, Dr. Robotozzi. Okay, we'll move on. The next is, uh, new business. Any new business?
You know, the motion closed? You know, the motion closed?
See, next, uh,
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I have something. Yeah, um, two things. Um, I, I just want to, I want to bring this to you, Mr. Uh, Smith through to the attorney. We were voted in January, on January 21st, 2021, on, uh, F11 and it was our designation of meetings. So my question to you, um, Madam, uh, Attorney, is that when we have a change in the calendar, does it have to go on resolution including a time?
Once, can you hear me? Okay, once the, uh, once the, the board adopts the calendar, uh, the, the schedule of board meetings in January, usually at the, at the organization meeting and advertises it. But then the board can change the dates of meetings throughout the rest of the year, provided that they advertise the new date. Similar, and, and in fact, that's what happened with this board meeting that was originally scheduled to have been on March 25th. And, uh, a prior board meeting, there was simply a discussion that, that we needed to have this meeting on the 18th so that the budget could be preliminarily approved. There was no resolution that I can recall to change the, the meeting date. So it really just, the requirement is that the public be notified within at least 48 hours, that, that there's going to be a change in the meeting date or in the meeting time. It doesn't require a board resolution.
So, um, my other question is that if we are going, um, that's one question I had because I couldn't make six o'clock time. I emailed the su, uh, the superintendent and the board president. I haven't heard back from anyone on that. So I can't make six o'clock on the first day. It's just impossible. I'm trying to work on it, work to get changed. I really wanted to attend, so I was excluded from that information. So I hope somebody's going to brief me on what happened in the executive session. Because if my worry was that it was something we could vote on, I would be excluded from the discussion. So that's something that I'm worried about. The other thing I have an issue is that, um, there was an email about buying shirts. I, I, I have an issue with that. I don't think we should be buying shirts. My, my question is that if we are going to buy this shirt, I will be paying for my own. So could you please tell me what it costs? I do not want to take any kind of, um, shirt like that. And it just, to me, it's not, no need for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Seeing none, motion closed?
Motion.
Vice President Abujabo?
Second.
By Ms. Casper. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing all aye, we will adjourn. Thank you all. Have a good night.